So Acts, chapter 11, and somebody other than me can read tonight.
I'll read.
Good.
You can read?
Sometimes. I can't do math, though.
Okay.
Eleven, all of eleven?
Hmm?
Okay. Now the apostles and the brothers who were throughout Judea heard that the Gentiles also had received the word of God. So when Peter went up to Jerusalem, the circumcision party criticized him, saying, "You went to uncircumcised men and ate with them." But Peter began and explained it to them in order. "I was in the city of Joppa praying, and in a trance I saw a vision, something like a great sheet descending, being let down from heaven by its four corners, and it came down to me. Looking at it closely, I observed animals and beasts of prey and reptiles and birds of the air, and I heard a voice saying to me, 'Rise, Peter, kill and eat.' But I said, 'By no means, Lord, for nothing common or unclean has ever entered my mouth.' But the voice answered a second time from heaven. What God has made clean, do not call common. This happened three times, and all was drawn up again in heaven. And behold, at that very moment, three men arrived at the house in which we were sent in which we were sent to me from Caesarea?"
Caesarea.
Caesarea, and the Spirit told me to go with them, making no distinction. These six brothers also accompanied me, and we entered the man's house. And he told us how he had seen the angel stand in his house and say, "Send the Joppa and bring Simon, who is called Peter. He will declare to you a message by which you will be saved, you and all your household." As I began to speak, the Holy Spirit fell on them, just as on us at the beginning. And I remembered the word of the Lord, how he said, "John baptized with water, but you will be baptized with the Holy Spirit. If then God gave the same gift to them as he gave to us when we believed in the Lord Jesus Christ, who is I, that I could stand in God's way." When they heard these things, they fell silent, and they glorified God, saying, "Then to the Gentiles also God has granted repentance that leads to life." Now those who were scattered because of the persecution that arose over Stephen traveled as far as Phoenicia and Cyprus and Antioch, speaking the word to no one except Jews. But there were some of them, men of Cyprus and Cyrene, who on coming to Antioch spoke to the Hellenists, also preaching the Lord Jesus. And the hand of the Lord was with them, and a great number who believed turned to the Lord. The report of this came to the ears of the church in Jerusalem, and they sent Barnabas to Antioch. When he came and saw the grace of God, he was glad, and he exhorted them all to remain faithful to the Lord with steadfast purpose, for he was a good man, full of the Holy Spirit and of faith. And a great many people were added to the Lord. So Barnabas went to Tarsus to look for Saul, and when he had found him, he brought him to Antioch. For a whole year they met with the church and taught a great many people. And in Antioch, the disciples were first called Christians. Now in these days prophets came down from Jerusalem to Antioch, and one of them named Agabus stood up and foretold by the Spirit that there would be a great famine over all the world. This took place in the days of Claudius. So the disciples determined everyone according to his ability to send relief to the brothers living in Judea. And they did so, sending it to the elders by the hand of Barnabas and Saul.
Okay. Mostly narrative in the chapter this week. Peter gives a, you know, kind of a report, a rehash of what we went over last week when we looked at 10, looked at Peter's vision. Too bad Richie's not here. Got another circumcision day. That word's everywhere.
I'll set him the recording.
Thoughts?
This Saul in the last verse thirty. This they did, sending their gifts to the elders by Barnabas and Saul. Is that the Paul Saul? Was that another Saul?
No, that's the Paul Saul.
Okay. There he sounded like a good Saul, not a bad Saul.
Um, this is post-conversion.
I'm sorry?
This is post-his conversion.
Okay.
So.
But I never heard anything, never written, or who am I? I just hear, you know, I just, you know, hear a Saul being persecuting the church. Not in any way, because they're sending their gifts to the elders. I mean, he's a good guy. He's... And that's okay. I'm just saying, but it was just, it just dawned on me that...
Yeah, same Saul. There's no event where all of a sudden they just start calling him Paul. Is, and it will happen in a chapter or two, I believe, is they'll gradually start saying, "And Saul, who is also called Paul," and then they'll just start calling Paul.
Oh, okay.
So there's no event that says, "And on this day forward, you shall be no longer known as Saul, you shall be known as Paul." It doesn't happen. It just goes, oh, they... Yeah, we start calling Paul because reasons.
So the road to Damascus was...
A while back.
That's when I thought it.
That what?
Yep.
That's when I thought it.
Yeah.
Okay, so the circumcision party. Those are Jewish converts to Christianity that are teaching. Not only do you have to have saving faith, but you also have to observe all of the ceremonial law of which that is included. So you have to watch what you eat, you have to watch what you wear, you have to watch who you associate with. You have to be circumcised, blah, 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 blah. And of course thereafter, it was like, "Oh, you were eating with unclean people," right? Because he went to Gentile house. Uh, he was staying with a tanner before he had the vision, and then went to, uh... Was that Joppa? Where was that town?
Joppa.
Was it Joppa? Okay.
Yeah.
So before he went to Joppa, uh, he had his vision while he was staying at the house of a tanner, which staying with the tanner would have made him virtually unclean, because a tanner handles animal skins. So that person would have been unclean, so Paul, or Peter, a Jew, could not, should not have been doing that, strictly speaking. So Peter was picking and choosing a little bit.
So even though tanning was for his profession, didn't necessarily mean he was eating or consuming, but it still made him unclean?
Yeah, made him virtually unclean.
But being, oh, okay.
I mean, you could be an undertaker too, but you still had to go through all the ritual cleaning before you could go to the temple or do any of that stuff. Okay, so you have these circumcision party like we talked about. I think we talked about, or maybe we talked about Sunday. I don't remember.
No, we talked about it last week.
Well, the last week, we talked about how you have these people who, you know, for thousands of years, they've been raised as Jews with these traditions and observances. Now all of a sudden, you know, they're going to be told, you don't have to do all that stuff anymore. Yeah, it's not something you can do overnight. So we're seeing the beginnings of that here with Peter. Obviously, he has relaxed his restrictions on himself by staying with the tanner. Then he has this vision, and he goes and eats with Gentiles and preaches, uh, the gospel to them. And now he's back and he's reporting about it, because these guys are going, "Hey, you did this." And Peter says, "Oh, no, 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 this is what happened, and you know, here's the deal. And the Holy Spirit told me to do it, and I did it, and the Holy Spirit fell on them, just like it did to us." So who am I to say this isn't how it's supposed to be? So then basically, that's that whole first part of the chapter is basically doing that. Recounting that what happened.
So that great sheet? Was the Holy Spirit?
No, that was the vision he had. So he had a vision in the, the Holy Spirit sent him a vision. In the vision, this thing that looked like a sheet came down, and it was full of food. It was full of all kinds of animals. That was back in chapter 10. Chapter 10? Yeah. Uh, and then the Spirit told him, you know, "Peter, rise, kill and eat." And he said, "Lord, I've never eaten, because there's unclean animals on there." There were things he couldn't eat, uh, as a Jew, and God says, you know, "No longer call unclean what I've declared to be clean." So not only is it, you can eat all that stuff now, you also can go to the Gentiles and, like I told you to, make disciples. All right, so all that stuff, all that ceremonial laws now out the window. And there was a there was a blog post from the Goddessine crowd, or the High Churchy Luthers, and it was talking about, I haven't watched the video yet, but it was talking about Judaizing Christianity today, which is still happening. You know, you'll see these websites where they insist on calling Jesus Yeshua, because it's more authentic. Well, yeah, that's his name in Aramaic. His name is Joshua, Joshua. You know, but you have to call him that. Okay, whatever. And then, you know, you can always tell if someone's slightly Judaizing Christianity, they insist on calling God Yahweh, which that's his name in the Old Testament, but that's just, I don't know, first off, if you don't know, that's how it's said. We don't know how it was. So we don't know that.
Isn't that such a bad thing?
No, that's why God told us what his name was. His name is I Am. The Being One. Strictly speaking, it's I Am the Being One, the Isn't One. So, but, but, so they think, oh, and they want to reenact Passover Seder's at Passover. Like Monday, Thursday, they want to have Passover Seder. They want to think somehow they're being more authentic if they add all this Jewish stuff to Christianity. Which, eh, no, it's not really helpful. It's not commanded. But they like dredging up that ceremonial law, because it's stuff we can do, right?
Yeah, and I can get carried away with that too.
Yes. So there's a, he did a video, and it's like forty-five minutes. I haven't watched it yet, but it's about what's going on today with trying to Judaize Christianity and attach things to it, which that's what Jesus yelled at the Jews from in his day, was them attaching stuff to God's word. So I'll watch that, and maybe, and maybe we can watch it here. I don't know. Uh, see if it's worth our time to do that.
I haven't watched anything in a while.
No, so maybe we'll do that, because that'd be interesting to see how that stuff applies today to what people are doing in the church. Because they are, and it's not, like I said, it's not really helpful. Uh, I'd rather people would like read their Bible and realize what goes on in the sanctuary is modeled on the temple and on the tabernacle. And, you know, there's reasons why everything is the way it is. So if you want to bring in Jewish ceremonial law, go to church, because it already does that.
I don't think most churches teach that.
No, they don't. Or they mentioned it in Confirmation or Sunday School, a minute, and then that was it. Uh, but that's, that's the gist of that whole first section. There's really not a lot to it. Again, book Acts, lot of narrative, um, not a whole lot of doctrine per se, until we get to places where they actually do that. Uh, but everybody hears this. We have that important phrase again, "When they heard these things, they fell silent and they glorified God, saying, 'Then to the Gentiles also God has granted repentance that leads to life.'" So Peter's reporting back. Peter was sent on a mission to the Gentiles. He's reporting back what he saw, and what he saw is, hey, there are people, there are people too. So, and everybody's, again, like they, in those earlier chapters, they were all of one accord, and they all did this stuff together. And again, here, oh, they worshiped God and said, "Oh, the Gentiles also God has granted repentance." Repentance that leads to life is a neat phrase. So repentance, oh, what's the word? Hebrew, I don't remember.
I'm gonna go, go.
It's, it's like, it's like shah or something like that.
That kind of what went through my mind then is this, that in verse eighteen, "So then God has granted even to the Gentiles repentance unto life. He went to sheath, and that, you know, you would, that..." I'm thinking of curtain, you know, curtain of temple that, that that's what comes to my mind as I read that passage.
Yeah, the imagery of veils being removed is, I think, he shuvah, that's not the right word. Uh, no, the Hebrew word for turn. That's what you need to look up.
Turn?
T-U-R-N, yeah, Hebrew word for turn.
Didn't really...
Uh, yeah, because that's modern Hebrew.
Okay, I see. It starts with twenty, verse twenty-five, "Barnabas went to Tarsus to look for Saul."
Shub.
What did I say?
Did I say shah or something like that? It was shub, I was close. And it was a shsh. Like half the time, if you do the shah, you're going to be in the vault.
And they'll know what you're trying to do?
Yeah. Yeah, so shub or shub.
S-H-U-B.
Yeah, so that's the Hebrew word for turn, which is all over the Old Testament, but at about a tenth of the places, it's translated correctly as repent, not turn. So repentance that leads to life, that Jewish idea, because then to the Gentiles also God has granted repentance that leads to life. Uh, these are Jewish converts saying that, so that's why I'm bringing up the Hebrew word. Uh, turning, this idea of turning. Uh, repentance is something God does to you.
Say it again?
Yeah, that's why we're talking about this. So repentance is actually something God does to you.
What?
God, God, yes, it is. So God gives you the ability to acknowledge your sin and turn back to Him, and turn away from whatever sinful behavior you're doing. So it's actually, it's something that's driven from God's side to us.
I think God do it to everybody.
Good question.
Or He does, but they use their free will to not use it.
Right. So I think, I think they actually talk about it here somewhere. Yeah, to turn around. "Repentance is God's work that leads a person to renounce sin, requesting God's mercy and returning to His way." Jeremiah thirteen ninety-two. What did I say?
Jeremiah thirty, thirty nineteen.
That's all right. Jeremiah thirty-one, eighteen. Yeah, so "You have disciplined me, and I was disciplined." "Bring me back that I may be restored." That is a turning back of the Lord in repentance. Uh, restoration or repentance, whether physical or spiritual, is only possible if the Lord brings it about. That also means you can ask Him to bring it about. Yes, so repentance isn't just asking for forgiveness. It's asking to be changed, right? That's the part we miss. So it's not just, "I did something wrong. I want to be forgiven." It's, "I don't want to do this anymore." So, and that's what the idea of this turning is, is turning toward God's way. And we can't do that on our own.
Okay.
So that's, but we often think of repentance as just being, "I'm sorry," like I got caught most of the time, "but I'm sorry I sinned." And it's like, "I'm sorry, I, I want this to be repaired. I want this to be restored. I want to turn away from my old behavior." And, you know, a good way to think about that is always go back to Psalm fifty-one. That, yeah, the classic story of David and Bathsheba, and then Nathan coming to him and showing him he was a sinner. He would never have repented. God sent Nathan as his spokesman to show him what he did, that he needed to turn from that way.
So I have a bowl, and in this bowl is my salvation. And what is in this bowl, I have not put there. God has filled this bowl with repentance and belief in Christ, and all right, so this, I, I...
And he gave you the bowl.
So he gives me the bowl, so I reach in and I get my repentance, and I reach in and I get my...
Believe, everything.
Yeah, and then I have my salvation, and the bowl's empty. I go there.
Yeah, but your cup runneth over.
I'm sorry?
But your cup runneth over.
Absolutely.
That's literally what that's talking about. So your cup runs, it's like, it's not like you just go to the grace bowl, "I'm using my grace, and using my grace." That's Roman Catholic. You know, it's like the old treasury of merit, right? So the saints were so holy, and they had grace to spare, so we can like help a brother out, and give me some of your grace. I'm going to buy this indulgence and merit this grace from them to use for me, because I'm so wretched. I mean, that, that's all man-made, right?
That's so ridiculous.
That's where it all came from. But the truth is that grace is, it's not going to run out. The only time the grace runs out is when you flip the bowl over, because you don't want it. That's where your free will comes in. Otherwise, the bowl and everything in it, it's got nothing to do with you. It's purely God, including this idea of wanting to change.
Okay, but... Never.
Nice of that. Can't remember the Greek word for repentance. Ah, doesn't matter. Something I'll keep for next time. Yeah, so that's a neat, a neat little phrase.
Okay.
The way they said that.
The repentance is in that bowl, and we take out that repentance. Okay, I'm truly sorry for my sin. Please help me change. I don't want to do it again. But then I go do it again. Is that why we have to keep repenting? Because we keep doing this.
Because our human nature is antithetical to God's way. So, I mean, that's why the original Christians bring this, like, we'll get to that here, was that, and this is where they were first called Christians, because they called themselves followers of the way. You know, and the way was God's way.
But when we...
Our ways go in the other way.
Yeah, because when we ask for that repentance and ask to change, and we still keep doing it again and again, what, you know, like your sexual sin, your gambling, your addicts, your, you know, even little things that people don't consider sin, like, you know, laziness, or, you know, not doing, not being faithful and, you know, going to church, little things like that. Like, if we acknowledge it, that it's wrong, but we keep doing it anyway, are we truly repenting?
Depends on the, sometimes, yes, sometimes no. Sometimes we just fall back into that behavior. You know, because you're not going to pray, "God, don't ever let me do this again."
Why not?
Just not going to do that. I mean, maybe, I'm not going to say he's not going to do it.
He can do anything.
He can do anything, but the solution for all sin would be, "God, make us so we can't sin anymore." Then we wouldn't have free, then you wouldn't have free will.
I have to not want to sin.
Right.
I have to want it. To repent is, okay, I'm, I'm either sorry I did it, or sorry I got caught doing it, one or the other.
Okay, well, throw this out there then. What does God really want? For us to not sin, and this might be a little controversial, because of course God doesn't want us to sin. But does God want us to not sin, or does God want us to come to Him to deal with the problem of sin?
He wants us to come to Him.
Right.
It's a relationship with Him.
Right.
Since we're born with it. Okay, we come here with it. That's our, that's our natural nature.
Sin's not going away.
No, exactly, exactly. It's not going to go away until Jesus comes, you know?
Right.
So...
Come, Lord, Jesus come. That's crazy. We can't be perfect.
Ever, right? It's impossible.
Yeah.
And to even try is a sin, because then it's vanity. And you can't, so the more you try, the worse you get, you know?
Wasn't it John Wesley who tried to be perfect?
Probably.
Trying to read the instruction? Methodist nonsense.
Well, you know, that's, well, I guess...
And your monks on the mountaintop try to do that too.
Okay, they're delusional.
But, but you know, it's not so much, and I have to be careful what I say, because it's not so much that we sin, because sinning is obviously death. Carries, all sins carry the same death penalty.
Right.
But it's, God's not necessarily hung up on the sin. He's hung up on the, "Do you think you can do this on your own, or don't you think you need Me?" He wants us to see, we need Him for everything.
Right. Okay, but I truly believe that there are some people, you know, who have an issue. Okay, let's say, let's say heroin addict, okay?
Yeah.
You know, hands and knees, begging, calling out to Christ, "Please, please help me. Please, you know, let me rid this for my life. Let me follow You. Let me draw closer to You, Lord. Please rid this for my life." But they can't, because there's so much in their head.
Yeah, right.
What about them? Because I think they are being repented, and they do want to change, and they do want to turn from their sin, but they can't.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, some things, is it because of fall in human nature? You know, the fallen world, that they are broken in that way? Yeah. I think in some cases, yes. In other cases, we ask, are we asking the right question? If we don't like the, you know, litmus test appear, if we don't like the answer we're getting, are we asking the right question?
Probably not.
So if it's, if it's just, "Take this away and make it all go away", no, um, but maybe, you know, "Show me how to do it, to rid myself of this." You know, maybe we don't ask the right questions. Uh, maybe we see the answers and we ignore them, don't recognize them, or, or don't like them. You know, where it's like, "Oh, yeah, I want to do this, but I don't want to go rehab."
They don't want to put in the work.
Right. It's like, well, I just want to...
And they think, "Magic wand, take this for me." That means...
Yeah, and then we color it with, "I'm not strong enough to do this. God, I need You to do this for me."
That's saying we think you're not strong enough.
So...
But addiction is also physical too.
Sure.
Physical addiction.
Yeah, so are there, you know, are there where it's completely out of the person's control? Yes. And is it still a result of sin? Yes. Because in a world where sin didn't exist, those things wouldn't exist. Uh, but...
But you got to get rid of the physical sin before you can work on your internal.
Get rid of the physi, I'm sorry, get rid of the physical?
The physical sin of the addiction.
Okay.
Before you can work on your spiritual.
I think they're so intertwined, because it's the, the...
I kind of think you can't get rid of the physical without the spiritual.
Yeah, that you can't have one without the other. It's like a chicken and egg thing.
Well, they do work with you spiritually too.
Sure.
You know?
And, well, from, I actually have a grand, a stepson of mine to teach me, without any props, "Teach me drug addiction." He was an addict, you know, "Teach me what you go through, what's in your mind, what, you know, what, I know it makes you feel good," you know, and then all that kind of good stuff. "Teach me drug addiction." And he did. He said, generally, and you start it when you're in a downward spike, you know, emotionally, you're, you know, you're down, really, really down. And somebody offers it to you, and it makes you feel good, you know? And he said, "You spend the rest of your life, or as long as you're chasing that first high," you know? And he said, "If you ask anyone, they'll just, 'I'm going to try this,' you know? We all have done that, but I, when you really become addicted, it's, you're, it's, it's, it's not the drug. It's beyond the drug, and I think that's when you're, it, it, you know, it, it, it's not just picking them and doing, 'I got it, they got to have it,' no. You know, it goes much, much deeper than that. And you have to go that deep if you want to get...
And you'll do anything to get effect.
Yes, yeah, exactly. And you have to go that deep to find out why it's there, you know, and then be able to...
They work on that too.
Exactly, oh, yeah. And that, that's where the tough part is, because we have to look inside ourselves, and if we don't like what we see, we just as soon ignore it, or just, uh, well, blame it on somebody else, or something else, or whatever.
That's a whole lot easier than dealing with it.
Yeah, that's, exactly, that self-examination. If you really do it right, man, it'll, ooh. That'll get you, you know? And it, it's a good thing, you know, if you're doing it to get closer and to help your walk with God. It's a wonderful thing, but it can really be scary, you know, because you find a you that you don't like.
Yeah, let's say I have this thing, it's called a... Yeah, let's say I have this thing, it's called a, it's called a Beichspiegel, uh, which is German for confession mirror. And it's, it's a fairly modern one, so it's got all the fun stuff, like the internet and things of that nature in it. But it takes you through the Ten Commandments, basically as a prelude to the Lord's Supper. So it's like your before communion night confession. Uh, don't use it all the time, because it's long. I mean, it takes you through all Ten Commandments in detail. And it's like, did you think about this? Did you do that? There's, that's always, there's no guidance, it's just, here's the mirror, that the law doing its job, showing you you're a sinner. And you go through the thing and you like, don't ever do the whole thing. Because you'll be miserable when you're done, you're just like, ugh, which is the point. But, you know, like, like Luther said, you know, you go through the Ten Commandments every day and think about them that way. But when you get hung up on something, then you just stop. That's what you need to be praying about. And then you go out on with your day, not like, not like rattle it through the rosaries, like I have to say them, I have to recite them in this order three times a day because I have to. It's like, no, you do it because you want to get your mind focused on, what is it I need to take to God?
Ever since you taught me that, I've shared that with other people, when they say, when they come to me and say something like, I don't know what to pray about. Like, I know I should pray, but I don't know what to pray about. Ever since you taught me that, I've passed that on to other people, like, when, and when you stop, well, that's what you should pray about.
Yeah, do the Ten Commandments, do with the Lord's Prayer. Even the Ten Commandments. You know, because it's not always, doesn't always have to be when you're going through the Ten Commandments, thinking about bad stuff. You know, it could be about good stuff too, think about the ways God does bless you with our Lord's Prayer, daily bread and what have you.
I like the Lord's Prayer, I take it. I started saying that a lot when, when this COVID thing happened and they said that was the perfect amount of time to wash your hands.
A lot of people did.
I, that's when I really started to say it all the time.
Yeah.
And like, somebody walked in, and me in the bathroom, and just kinda chuckled, she's like, yeah, I do that too.
Certainly better than the singing the happy birthday song.
I don't know, somebody standing at a sink, bringing their hands together, singing happy birthday.
Yes.
That's crowned, crowned creepy.
Yeah, it's like, time to get the butter, big butterfly nut.
My prayer, well, one prayer that I'll never forget that I prayed, and it, it was, I took God at His word, I didn't know what to pray. I knew what I was, what the problem was, but I didn't, you know, how to articulate it. And my prayer was, Holy Spirit, this one's on you. You know, and I, I meant that. I just, I couldn't, I couldn't get the words together in my mind. And it, it was just such a awful feeling or place for me to be in spiritually, and I knew it. And I did, and I had pecked at the prayer, you know, Lord help me. But this day, I mean, it really got to the bottom of that, I told you, Spirit, this one's on you. And I swear, if I'd had one more hair in my ear, I could have heard it. I actually felt as though, you know, I could almost hear. I knew that He was at the throne. I knew that He was there. Took him at his word, and that's all I could pray, Holy Spirit, this one's on you.
Well, you know, I mean, scripture does tell us, you know, before the thought, the words are upon my lips, Lord, you know. Right, it's Psalm one hundred and thirty-eight, I think it is. Uh, you know, before the prayer's on your lips, He knows what you're gonna say. So it's like, if you don't know what to say, you already said it, so stop worrying about it. He's got this, you know, even though you can't articulate it.
See, that's a great thing to talk to.
Prayer is for us. God doesn't need her prayers, He knows, oh, we don't need to ask. But the prayer is for us. For us to be aware of Him working in our lives, which doesn't necessarily do it in a voice in our ears necessarily, but it does do it through other people. He does it through His word, uh, but we're not always cognizant of it. You know, so the actual prayers, that's for us, which is why He gives us the word to pray, and that's why, it was interesting, a Lutheran pastor on his radio show the other week said something like, you know, talking about made up prayers, somebody wrote in to his show and said, well, what about, you know, I don't know, I, I'm not good at making up prayers, you guys, so stop doing that. Because when it's your words, a lot of times that's not good. Because God gives us all the words to pray. He wants us to pray His words back to Him. You know, so we don't have to have these, you know, fancy.
Thee that rolls, yeah.
You know, the long, made up, like the prayer of the church, but that serves a purpose every Sunday, but, uh, because we're all supposed to be praying the same words. If we do it right. Uh, but not this long, drawn-out, dramatic, God's not grading you on the essay, okay? It's like, oh, I need to pray for something. I'm gonna go to the Psalms, because there's a Psalm about that, and I'm gonna pray that Psalm, because that's what He given to us for, their prayers.
I think that's where a lot of people get caught up, they want their prayer to be so perfect. And they don't know what to say. And you just tell them, just start talking, it doesn't matter.
Exactly.
It doesn't matter.
So I, when I say, in your word, you said, don't ask me the page and the chapter, but I know it's in there somewhere. And I, I've had it, heard it, and, you know, so, you know, you have said.
Yeah, so, that's it.
You're like, I don't know the address, but I know it's in there.
Luther, I mean, Luther did that first thing, he had verse numbers, then he always, you know, Luther would say, as it's written, and suddenly he would get the chapter wrong, like every time. So there's always, every time he cites scripture, there's footnote, like it's in brackets, because that's not what he wrote. And you have editors that put, I filled this in because he had it wrong. All the time. Everybody does that, just like, yes, it's one of the tricks of, of like speaking, this, or writing preaching even, is, like, I use a full manuscript with all the footnotes on it, so I don't, because I'm me, so I gotta OCD it. But, you know, people are preaching, they'll just be like, you know, as it says in Exodus, Exodus chapter thirty, and they just keep going, everybody's like, oh yeah, Exodus chapter. It's not Exodus chapter, so he says like Exodus chapter ten. But write book, or, or it's not even in Exodus, it's in Deuteronomy. And, but that's not the point, the point is that, it does say that, the word does say that. It doesn't matter if you get the citation right, but the, but the trick is, it's, don't go, I think it's, um, and just derail the momentum of everything, it's just misspeak and move on. Like you did it on purpose. It's what, like, you try to teach lecturers, if you don't know how to say it, just say something and move on.
Pretend you do.
Pretend you knew what you're doing. Nobody's gonna know that they're correct half the time. That's, that's not the important part of it.
So I shouldn't have stopped at that word, I didn't know. Nope, just.
It doesn't matter what we're doing it here, but.
It does.
And, and just like, and you still learn, like, because schools of thought change, like Cyrene is actually Cyreni. You pronounce the E on the end now.
Only you would.
You didn't, you didn't used to, thirty years ago, forty years ago, you didn't used to.
I seen, E on E is not.
Yep. But anyway. So we got a lot of mileage out of repentance that leads to life, that's pretty good. So there's not a lot of doctrine in here, but the ones that is, are actually interesting. Uh, when you start to, when you start to unpack what's behind, and, and, and the reason it is, is because I'm reading Acts with an eye to, these people used to be Jews not long ago. So let's think about how they're thinking. And that's why we had all that background material at the beginning, it's like, this is what the world's like right now. Because it's important. I mean, it's gotta mean the same thing to them it did then as it does to us now. And if we think it means something different to us now, we did it like wrong and we need to stop doing that. Okay, so that was that first section. Uh, any questions about that? All right, and then those who were scattered because of the persecution, remember we talked about, uh, that, that that was the persecution under Claudius? Claudius? Claudius, yeah. He even mentioned him, yes, Claudius. Uh, so the, the, they are getting scattered a little bit already. And especially once they, you know, once they killed Stephen, everybody's like, whoa, they're killing us, all right, hmm. So people are, again, scattering further. So now you got them as far as Phoenicia, Cyprus and Antioch, so uh, Phoenicia is where, I don't even have it, it's not even on this map. So Antioch's way up here. That's Tomaus. Phoeni-, well, Phoenicia, that's in Egypt. Anyway, so they're getting, the Christianity scattering far and wide. Wonder if that's one of the reasons why the church grows during times of persecution. Because they get scattered, right? Possibly. Uh, there were some of them from Cyprus and Cyrene who were coming to Antioch, spoke to the Hellenists also, and I may have misspoke once a long time ago and said Hellenists were Greek-speaking Jews. They're not, they're Greeks, Greek-speaking Greeks. They're not Jews. So these are non-Jews, they're like Greek, Greek Greeks. So the Hellenists, uh, and they were getting preached to as well, so more Gentiles, right? And the hand of the Lord was with them, and a great number who believed turned to the Lord, there's that word, turned. The report of this came to the ears of the church in Jerusalem, and they sent Barnabas to Antioch. He came, saw the grace of God, was glad, exhorted them all to remain faithful with steadfast purpose, for he was a good man, full of Holy Spirit and of faith. Why they had to put those appellations attached to his name, um, I'm not sure. Uh, but mostly, I think that when you have those titles after your name, it gives you a certain authority, like you are apostiling, they were, he was sent, not that he's an apostle, he was sent by the apostles. Uh, when you have those appellations attached to your name, it's not, you know, it's not like you're a super Christian, but you're a pastor. Right? You know, so he exhorted them to do this. And then a great many people were added to the Lord. And Barnabas went to Tarsus to look for Saul, found him, brought him to Antioch, and then they stayed there a year and taught. Right, so they're baptizing, they're teaching, they're fulfilling the Great Commission. And in Antioch, the disciples were first called Christians. So until this time, there's no such word, right? They were just followers of the way. Um, and they called themselves the brothers. Sisters, brothers and sisters.
Do super Christians get to wear capes?
They should.
I think they should. They deserve it.
Yeah. So this is where they're first called Christians, uh, which does come from Latin. Uh, so even though we have a dog, Christorus in Greek. Christanos, Christanos, yeah, in Greek. Um, but it actually comes from the Latin, so it's from the native language of the Romans that the word comes from. Uh, because they're followers of Christ, that's the way that word is derived. Uh, and that's where that word starts. And it didn't catch on for a while, right? Because it's kind of a, it's almost derogatory, it's kind of like calling Lutherans Lutherans. They didn't wanna be called Lutherans, it was given them as a term of derision, like followers of Luther, it was a derogatory term. And then you're like, yeah, at some point you have to own it, so. And Luther absolutely did not find a church named after him. But now we're stuck with it. Now in these days, prophets came down from Jerusalem to Antioch. And one of them named Agabus stood up and foretold by the Spirit that there would be a great famine over all the world. This took place in the days of Claudius. Claudius later, what years was Claudius, you remember, Emily? Is that the seventies? Is that after the destruction?
Sixties, I thought it was sixty.
Okay, okay.
It was before the destruction of the temple, because that didn't happen.
Before the structure of the temple, but not yet.
Right, the temple hasn't been destroyed yet.
All right, which it did come to pass. Uh, so that, uh, why? No, earlier. You're thinking Nero, that was under the Roman.
Forty-one to fifty-four.
Yeah, forty-one to fifty-four was Claudius, so that's now.
Wow, that's really close.
That's actually now. So this is right now.
Okay.
All right, my bad, I was, I was thinking, that's actually Nero in sixty-six, that famine. Yeah, so this famine is taking place now, uh, which is why they decide, okay, they're gonna help out the guys in Judea. And they also, okay, everybody pitch in according to how they can, and we're gonna help them out. And that's how that gets started, right? So we start seeing missionary work already, we see, uh, you know, world relief work going on. Uh, all the things you see the church doing today, you see it beginning here. Now about this prophet. Note on that too. I'm not entirely sure what kind of prophet he is. I don't know much about Agabus. If I had the triple D, his name would be in there, it's everybody's name in that. Agabus. Anybody else know anything about Agabus?
My little note just says Agabus foretold by the Spirit. The Spirit demonstrated power through foretelling of the future.
I think it's important to disconnect the word prophet from Agabus foretold by the Spirit. So he foretold by the Spirit, he told something that was going to come to pass, which is what we think of as prophecy. But a prophet is just a messenger of God's word. So sometimes the prophets told stuff that was going to happen, for sure. Most of the time they were doing, this is what's gonna happen if you don't change, this is what's gonna come about. So in that way, they are telling the future, but the primary purpose of the prophet is to bring a message from God, not necessarily to tell the future.
Doesn't say much.
No, he's traditionally recognizes one of the seventy, okay, that's nice. Cool. So Luke is possibly one of the seventy also. That's really it, that's the chapter. Pretty much.
When it says each said according to his ability.
Mm-hmm.
His ability.
To give.
Oh. There, okay.
Right, so they're either sending money, or food, or donations, or maybe even, hey, I've got time to go help, or whatever.
Okay, it's usually, I, I'm thinking, when they were, yes, we're giving to them and they.
It's famine relief, so.
Oh, okay.
I have magic beans though. All right, so now, next week we'll have more history with chapter, because I'm not, I'm not gonna start another chap- chapter tonight. But we're gonna do a lot of Paul and Barnabas going on, Herod passes. A lot of parts, Paul and Barnabas for a while. And then we have the first ecumenical council, Jerusalem one, first Jerusalem council in chapter fifteen. So like Vatican two and the Council of Nicaea, the very, very first ecumenical councils, the Council of Jerusalem, and that's in fifteen. Was not a big to-do, like these other ones were.
It's funny reading that, I didn't think we did that much out of it.
It's a short chapter, but the others are a little bit tough, though. This is what I think with one of these history periods, if I had done like a formal, like I usually do with all the notes written out, I don't think we would've talked about that.
Probably not.
Because we would've found out, like, I would've found like historical stuff about people or whatever, we wouldn't, would've just dug into the words.
Sometimes the best conversation is planned.
It was very interesting.
Does that mean? What's that, does that mean? She wants me to, I'm not doing it. Bad habit. Right?
Yes.
Right?
What?
For the bold ones, for you know?
Yeah, that's not your job.
Yeah, I don't mind doing it.
I certainly never would've learned all that about repentance.
I'm probably not explaining it completely to its fullness, you know, it's, go digging. I am sure Luther has, I, I have, I'm sure Luther's got something to stick, because fortunately he was a genius and he was really good at saying these things plainly. I am sure Luther has, I, I have, I'm sure Luther's got something to stick, cuz fortunately, he was a genius and he was really good at saying these things plainly. Black guy, yeah, like, like Ouija board, Martin was.
No, that's no.
Right.
Satan, evil devil, demon, bad. You know I need a nap with words to start coming out.
Demon bad.
Bad.
All right, well, we'll stop there and pick it up next week, uh, with the next chat.